Good morning, or good evening, sorry. This open meeting of the Hopkin and Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we are complying with the executive order that suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The executive order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as the public body makes provisions through adequate alternative means to ensure interested members of the public are provided reasonable access to the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. It will further include a public hearing on a petition from Verizon and EverSource for the proposed relocation of an existing and the addition of another utility pole near 42 West Elm Street. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom app as posted on the town's web meeting calendar and the board's agenda identifying how public may join. Additionally, the meeting may also be broadcast by H-Cam through one of its many of its one or many of its channels or platforms. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided by the members of this body are available on the town's website via the meeting calendar unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know it otherwise. Meeting business ground rules. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will invite board members to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Not every agenda item will feature public comment for items with public comment. After members have spoken, the chair will afford the public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of public commentators, sorry, commentators, I will call on each by name and afford up to three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So before we start the meeting, as always, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hopefully you all have a flag in your house. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So let's start with the public forum. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak? If so, identify yourself by name and address. This has the potential to be by far the greatest meeting ever.
Oh, hi Norman.
Hi Mary Jo, how are you?
We're all good.
Hi Norman.
Hi Fred, and how are you?
I'm good. Thank you for joining us. Alright, so I'm going to close public forum. It doesn't look like we have anyone that's interested in making comments. So we're going to now go to the COVID-19 update. Sean McCalliffe, Public Health Director, will provide an update on the town's response to COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. McCalliffe.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. Today, we have sixteen cases. Eight are active, eight are recovered. Zero deaths. All our recent cases are related to work.
Sean, I'm gonna have to interrupt you, Sean. Sean, I'm gonna have to interrupt you. We're not getting anything that you're saying here. It says that your bandwidth is low. So we're not getting anything that you're saying here.
Hey Sean, if you have the ability to join by phone and dial in by audio through phone only, that would probably be better.
Okay. Any recommendations?
So.
Call in through audio only.
Josh, can you mute him? And someone said, I don't know, Norman, can you send him a text or something like that, let him know? We'll move on to the, we'll move on to the next agenda item, the COVID-19 state of emergency. At this time, the board will consider declaring a state of emergency in the town of Hopkinton. We understand that this may be, this may enable the town to access state and federal funds in the future. Board members, do you have any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary Jo.
How is this going to change? Is this going to change any of the openings of any of the stores that are open or any of the businesses that we can go to right now? Is this going to lock everything down or is it just going to be the same as we have now but allow us the funding?
So I believe that what we're, I mean, our state is in a state of emergency, so I don't believe that that we would take any further measures other than what the Governor Baker has put into effect. But I think, let me default to Mr. Kamalo on that.
Yeah, good evening, through the chair. Mary Jo, to your question, nothing changes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Catino, I will request a motion.
I don't, I don't have an emotion for.
Alright, so how's this? I request, I request a motion to declare a state of emergency in the town of Hopkinton as follows. Town of Hopkin in declaration of emergency. Whereas the 2019 novel coronavirus COVID-19 is a highly contagious and potentially fatal respiratory disease, the prevalence of which is increasing rapidly throughout the world, inclusive of the United States and Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Whereas COVID-19 has been declared a public health emergency of the international concern by the WHO. Whereas on March 10, 2020, the governor has declared a state of emergency to mobilize the Commonwealth's resources needed to address this public health crisis. Whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States has declared a national emergency to similarly mobilize national resources. Whereas the governor has issued emergency orders requiring all businesses and organizations who do not provide COVID-19 essential services to close their physical workplaces and facilities to workers, customers, and the public as of March 24, 2020 until May 4, 2020. Whereas the governor has issued emergency orders suspending normal operations at schools and non-essential daycare facilities until May 4, 2020. Whereas the governor has issued various additional emergency orders on different dates, substantially altering the operations of the state and local government in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Whereas the General Court of the Commonwealth has acted, has enacted legislation specific to the COVID-19 public health emergency to postpone annual town meetings and elections and otherwise altering the operation of various state and local government functions. Whereas the residents and businesses of Hopkin are in immediate and serious risk of suffering personal and financial losses result of COVID-19's current ongoing threat to public health and safety. Whereas the ordinary resources of Hopkin are expected to be insufficient to meet the needs of its residents and businesses in coping with public health, safety, and economic impacts of COVID-19. Whereas the Hopkin and Select Board has determined that immediate and public action, immediate public action is needed in order to prevent and minimize the spread of COVID-19 by and among the people of Hopkinton. And whereas it is critical to take additional steps to prepare for, respond to, and mitigate the spread of COVID-19 to protect the health and welfare of Hopkinton. Therefore, the Select Board pursuant to its authority under section 4.7.4.1 of the Massachusetts Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, January 2019, and any other applicable law inclusive of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 31, and Statute 1950, Chapter 639, hereby declares a state of emergency in the town of Hopkin as a result of the threat of COVID-19 as resulted, as recognized by the global, national, and state health officials. Excuse me. This declaration of a state of emergency is effective immediately and shall remain in effect until is rescinded by the Select Board or governor's declaration of emergency is rescinded, whichever comes first. Roll call vote. Mr. Catino, how do you vote?
Mr. Chair is so moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Back in.
Sorry about that. Roll call vote, Mr. Catino.
Yes.
Mr. Herr.
Yes.
Mr. Nasrula.
Yes.
Ms. Lefrenier.
Yes.
Mr. Ted Stones, yes. So five to zero. Okay. Moving on. Police chief appointment. The Select Board has received screening report from Maria Casey, Human Resources Director, which details the police chief's screening and interview process and makes a recommendation to the board. The board will consider accepting the report and making appointments. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Okay. Yes, sir.
Maria Casey, Human Resources Director, stands ready to give you a summary of the report.
I look forward to that. Maria, you're on.
Great, can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. The town conducted the recruitment in accordance with the town charter and in the town's best practices as we use for all recruitments. We received four applications. We interviewed two that were exceeding the minimum of the qualifications. Those two candidates were Deputy Police Chief Joe Bennett and Police Lieutenant John Porter. On yesterday, Assistant Town Manager Elaine Lazarus and myself interviewed both candidates. And in summation, both candidates, Bennett and Porter, have the education, the requisite number of years in law enforcement, number of years command supervisory experience. Both candidates were able to articulate leadership skills in their experiences and had successful monetary grant experience. Both candidates spoke to their collective bargaining agreements, collective bargaining experiences, points of view on regionalization, safety trends in schools and the workplace, and gave examples of the most efficient and effective deployment of officers to a critical incident in addressing specific community need. Finally, both candidates, both candidates gave examples of working directly with both community members and the businesses. The interview panel concluded that candidate Bennett edged candidate Porter based on, one, his direct department budgeting experience working with the town's budget process. Two, served as, serves as the police department's public information officer. And, three, has a master's degree from Western New England. The town was very fortunate to have two excellent internal candidates who are dedicated to this community and Hopkinton Police Department and interested in serving as chief of police. And that's it.
Great. So I guess I'll circle back. Do the board members have any comments or questions?
You mentioned there were four internal candidates. Is it appropriate to have the names of the other two or no?
No.
Okay.
We protect all candidates, confidentiality, privacy, et cetera.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, from my perspective, I'm glad to see that we're doing this internally. I think that we've got some excellent people working in the police department in Hopkinton. And in the past, we've gone out sometimes, perhaps we could have stayed inside, but what have you. I just, I'm glad to see that we've got two candidates in front of us this evening, both internal candidates. The idea of promoting from within is how we build and maintain a strong organization going forward. And I'm happy to see that they are both internal.
I echo that sentiment. Anyone else?
Me three.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm really happy that we have internal candidates and we had two very competitive candidates from within. So I think that's a testament to our community and hiring.
Yep, I guess it's one of the reasons why we're one of the safest communities in the country. We've got great leadership and we've got great rank and file. And it's just a testament to our town.
So Mr. Chair, that's about internal candidates. Maria, are we under any kind of obligation with respect to Mass General Law or our bylaws or the charter to seek outside candidates? If we need to go outside, do we need to go outside just to look?
I'm going to have the town manager confirm for me, but no, we did post in accordance with the town charter.
Okay.
Maria, did we receive any applications from any external candidates?
No. Yes, we, yes, they were all internal.
But there was an opportunity for external people to apply.
No, we posted internally only. And the posting through the town's email via email for which every employee has one was sent out to all employees in accordance with the charter.
I'm a big fan of doing the promoting from within. Shows, shows character in our town and our department, so I think this is great. Mr. Catino, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Human Resources Director's screen report and appoint Deputy Chief Joe Bennett to the position of Police Chief for the town of Hopkinton subject to a successful contract negotiations and to authorize the town manager and town legal team to convince those, thus negotiations, those negotiations.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Chair, the motion Mr. Catino read, is that a motion that was prepared by counsel for us?
Yes, it was.
This is the route we wanted to take?
Yep. So, some discussion that I have is, so upon successful contract negotiations, at our next meeting, I'd like to have the chief actually in front of us to do a pinning ceremony. I think it's a very important part of getting the position. I know that the last chief that we promoted, we overlooked that and it's bothered me still to this day. So I want to, I understand about the open meeting law and I do know that we can assemble in groups of ten or less. And I think that if we, however we have to do it, I think it's important for the new chief if he's so inclined to be pinned on camera for all to see.
I agree.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the table and we have a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Catino, how do you vote?
Chair, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrula?
Yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. So carries five to zero. So congratulations to Chief Bennett. Thank you to Lieutenant Porter for your interest in the position. And congratulations to all. And congratulations to the town of Hopkinton for promoting somebody within that will take us to the next level as well. So excellent work by everyone involved. So, yes, and thank you, I just got a text. Potentially, we could also do his, the chief's oath during that ceremony as well. So something we can work on for a couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So as we move forward with the new chief in place, I'm assuming that will happen effective immediately tonight, correct?
Well, I don't know if it'll be tonight because it's, so he's interim right now. And I don't think he'd be the chief until he agrees on the contract negotiations.
Got it, okay, okay. And that was in the motion, did Mr. Catino read? Yeah, okay, that makes sense now. But my point is specific to as we get moving forward with the chief in place, assuming we get the chief work, the situation worked out. Then we have a deputy chief position open and we got to start figuring that out as well.
Yeah, so that's not really ours to decide. Chief Bennett will determine if, how he wants to structure the layer of his department. That's, that's, that's up to him. Okay. So congratulations to Joe Bennett. And moving on, public hearing. Are we, are we on time now for the public hearing or?
You have seven minutes, Mr. Chair.
Seven minutes, alright, so let's, is Sean McCalliffe back? Can he, are we able to take some audio from him?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you, Sean.
Okay. Alright, I've got about ten minutes of vocal left.
Well, I'm gonna cut you off, I'm gonna cut you off in seven so I can open the public hearing.
Alright, I'll be done in five.
Perfect.
Okay, so today, we have sixteen cases, eight active, eight recovered. All of our cases of late have been work and travel related. And there's some close contact associated with work and travel. We've dropped our number of quarantine people down to twenty-six. And we, right now, we're continuing to use the school nurses. And they're doing all of our trace back. We have weekly Zoom meetings with them. They complete all of the phone calls to track our cases and identify potential exposures within town that haven't been identified by the state. With that help from the nurses, Casey and I have been able to continue to provide case management for all of the residents. We're still helping them enter into the quarantine process, managing their testing, managing the day-to-day follow-up. And then we're helping them get out of the process and return to life. We, you know, we're, one of the things that we're focusing on is being strong advocates for the residents of Hopkinton. And I think that's helped with our compliance. We have cleared all but one of the first responders. And they should be finding results in the next couple of days. The, we entered into an agreement this morning to purchase the FDA's newly approved Abbott's rapid testing program. We're intending to offer that to the first responders so that we'll be able to provide fire, police, DPW, and essential personnel that may have been exposed to either a close contact or or some situation where that might have put them at risk. We'll be able to provide a rapid test kit and get answers, I believe, within half an hour. The kits that we're purchasing are going to cost approximately six hundred and sixty bucks. And we're going to cover that with a twelve thousand dollar grant that we received from the Mass Health Officers Association.
Awesome.
We've, we've implemented a monitoring and reporting program for the fire, police, and DPW departments to, again, mitigate any risk to those essential personnel. And I'd like to believe that it's, it's working well. And other regional departments have now implemented our procedure that we have in place here. You know, I've watched it on a daily basis at the fire department and they're executing really well. And we've followed up with the chief and deputy chief and they're executing well over at the police department. And they're making us follow the own, our own programs and protocols that we've implemented. We have reached out to all of our high-density housing units in town, making sure that they have policies and procedures in place to manage their risk. Right now, our goal is to be in touch with them on a weekly basis. And, and we're providing any assistance that they might need from the state health department, the National Guard, and/or the CDC as necessary. As I said, we've received a twelve thousand dollar grant from the Mass Health Officers Association. And we're actively going after some other grant opportunities to help support our efforts here in Hopkinton. We continue to support the community with their well and septic needs. And we're responding to all complaints that come in. So we feel that we've done a decent job at maintaining a continuum of service to the residents outside of the COVID duties that we're involved with. Before I close, we are going to start recommending the CDC use of masks in town. But we are looking at a way to roll that program out to the residents. And we're looking at opportunities to provide PPE for the senior residents and those at higher risk. And there'll be more to come as we look at how we can facilitate that program. But one of the things we want to reinforce is that the use of masks does not replace social distancing. It's really there to help those that might be ill but asymptomatic from spreading the disease to others. And that it's also a mechanism to keep residents from touching their face. And that's just an added precaution. And lastly, we wanted to thank the residents of Hopkinton for their continued partnership in our efforts to reduce the spread of the disease by practicing social distancing and reducing their movements in and around town. We believe that it's that or those efforts combined with the work that we're doing in town that have contributed to our lower lower counts and our better health in town. And we just ask for that continued assistance. Thank you for the opportunity and welcome to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Sean. Board members, anything?
Yeah, I have one quick question for Sean. At least, you mentioned the number of cases, there's still, there's no new cases though, correct?
We've had, we've had, I believe, seven new cases since the last time I appeared before the board.
And those were all travel or work-related?
Yes, we, two weeks ago, we had a burst of spring breakers and people returning from Europe and other parts of the country. So we had travel-related spring break. Now we're getting into work-related cases with those that are still considered essential. But we have a lot less in quarantine.
You know, it's quite disappointing seeing all those spring breakers, you know, swimming around in that fish market stew of, of virus. And I don't know what, I don't know what they were thinking. But I guess it is what it is.
What were you thinking in college, Mr. Nasrula?
No, I think the applicable thing is I wasn't.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Sean, how are you and Casey holding up during all this? I know it's been a busy few weeks for you guys.
We're doing much better at managing our, our time on off-hours. We're making sure that we dedicate time to our families. And we are sectioning time during the weekend where. where either I will receive calls or she'll receive calls. Um, but we're doing a much better job than, um, you know, two weeks, three weeks ago.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. And my hat's off to you, Sean and Casey, you guys are tireless, you're working hard, you're doing, you're doing the work to make sure that we're all safe here. And, and, uh, you've done a wonderful job so far and I would have no reason to, to think that it's not gonna continue. You guys are responsive, uh, I'm in touch daily with the Framingham Board of Health, uh, Department of Public Health, and you guys, your responsiveness is, uh, second to none from what I have, uh, from what I've experienced. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sean, is there anything that you, that you need from us? Is there anything that we can provide to you that, that you're not getting? Is there something that, uh, that, that you could use to help?
No, I, I believe that it's the, the municipality's cooperation with us and their part, the partnership with us that has really aided at us being as successful as we've been. Uh, the school nurses have been essential at helping us manage case trace back. And, um, I, I really believe that they are, they're, they're a resource that few other communities, um, have available to them.
I just, uh, you know, I just wanted to say that from what I'm hearing out there and, uh, from all those that I am in communication with, the, the people of this town are extremely grateful for your response and we thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, we are all very grateful for what you've done. I have a quick question on this, on the masks, though. Is the recommendation that, uh, when you're just walking on the street, you'd be wearing a mask? Or is this just in public places, uh, you know, like in grocery stores and that kind of thing?
It's, it's really for grocery stores, like, uh, pharmacies. I'm actually running out of power in my phone, but it's really for closed spaces.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, all right. If, uh, there's nothing else, I'm gonna shut my phone off. All right. Thank you.
Bye.
So seeing that at seven oh four, we go public hearing. Um, petition to relocate and add utility pole on West Elm Street. I call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing on a petition submitted by Verizon and EverSource to relocate an existing utility pole near forty-two West Elm and to add a new pole across the street for stability. A new house has been constructed at number forty-two and the fire department has requested the pole be relocated so emergency vehicles, vehicles can access the driveway before a certificate of occupancy is issued. The board has received permitting team comments and the applicant's responses. At this time, I will call on the Verizon representative for description of the work, Ross Billado.
That's good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good, you?
Chair.
All right.
Chair.
I'm sorry, um, oh, I'm sorry, so we have to open the, the public hearing.
So.
Second, okay. Any, uh, discussion? Hearing none, Ted Stone, yes?
Hurry, yes.
Nasserula, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we are open, so I'm sorry about that, Ross.
Not a, not a problem. Uh, my name is Ross Billado, representing Verizon New England. Uh, as you stated, this petition is for two poles. It is to relocate one existing pole number seventy-nine West Elm Street and to place one new pole, one, uh, pole seventy-nine S, um, across the street from that. Um, the reason for the relocation, as you stated, is the, there's a new home at number forty-two West Elm. And the way the driveway skew meets the road in the pole, it would make it very difficult for the fire department to pull in there if there was an emergency. So we're looking to move that pole twenty-seven feet across to the other side of the driveway and about seven feet off the edge of pave so that, uh, emergency vehicles can get in from either side, uh, of West Elm. The purpose for the new pole is because the existing pole seventy-nine has a, uh, pole-to-tree guy which goes across the street. Um, that pole-to-tree guy will need to be replicated with a new pole. So like you stated, that new pole seventy-nine S is just for support of that line because there is a slight curve in West Elm. So we need to support that whole line and, and that new pole will make, uh, the infrastructure more sound.
Okay. Um, are there any members of the public, are, are you done, Ross?
Yes.
Okay, any members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, hearing none. Board members, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, I have one. Um, is there any way to support the, uh, the relocated pole without putting another one across the street?
Excellent point.
Um, potentially, we could put a, a, what we'd call a push brace on that pole seventy-nine. But that's, uh, another pole that would be placed on an angle up against that relocated pole seventy-nine. And we'd have to get a private property easement and those are kind of ugly.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that the, the second pole leaning against it is even uglier than a new pole on the other side.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a, it's kind of a windy road as, to begin with.
Right.
Uh, anyone else before I go?
Well, the neighbors do agree to this, so. From what I see.
I didn't see that the neighbors agreed to that.
You didn't?
I didn't.
I agree with Albert that there are, um, no trees. That's right.
Yeah, so, um.
No trees.
So Ross, we went through this, uh, very recently, a, a, a very similar scenario when you wanted to replace, not you necessarily, but Verizon wanted to replace a pole down on Cedar Street on the flats that was leaning. And we stopped you from doing that because, um, where you put the pole across the street, um, you're adding poles where we're trying to, to decrease poles. Um, the, the pole question in town for me has been kind of a hot button, um, from day one. Uh, as from day one since I've been on the, on the board. Um, I know that there is a resident on, I believe it's on Fruit Street that has, I don't know if you'd call it eight poles or four double poles on his property, uh, that he did not agree to and has had zero luck having it taken care of. Um, so I, I understand that the, the pole going across the street might be beneficial for you guys. I don't think it's beneficial to the person that is, uh, gonna be the, the person receiving that pole. And if the, if, if the, the shoring pole that you're putting in is going, is gonna be on the person's house where that, where the, um, where the pole is, it sounds to me like that's something that they're gonna need to bear and not their neighbor. Uh, I am not for adding an additional pole to the, um, across the street as a, as a guy pole. I, I don't think that it's, uh, the right thing to do. Uh, I think that there's probably gonna be a better way to, for you guys to figure that out. So as one member of the board, I am not for that, um, um, at face value. But, um, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm one member of the board, I'm not the, I'm not the entire vote. So, um, Mr. Coutinho, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Uh, Mr. Herr, I, well, Mr. Herr, I believe we lost his speed. Uh, Mr. Nasserula?
Yeah, um, I have a question. So can you dig the poles deeper? Dig it deeper and not have a need for the supporting pole?
Uh, we may be.
Or maybe in case it, in con, you know, dig a deep pole, put some concrete in there or something. I mean, it seems, it seems there's gotta be a better way than always having these support poles. I understand that there's a need to move the pole and I'm in, I'm in favor of that, um, particularly for the public safety reasons. But when it comes to the, the, the one across the street, I, I mean, it seems like, you know, the, the, the explanations we always get have to, more to do with, oh, it's easier to put a supporting pole on the other side without really looking at other options.
I understand, um, we can put a larger class pole in there. I'm not the engineer on the project, the design, I'm just representing Verizon this evening. So there are other options we can explore. Uh, I was not able to review the site prior to this, um, this meeting. So it's all conditional-based, every situation is gonna be very different than the next. Um, I'm not sure what the corner on the pole is or how much pole is on that existing pole seventy-nine. So I can't really answer that question as for this specific, uh, location.
The pole across the street, the support pole, does that, um, is that like essentially in the woods or is that on someone's property?
No, that's in the public taking, I believe, uh, it'd be going.
But is it in front of someone's house?
Three feet off the edge of pave.
But is it in front of someone's house or is it wooded backward, you know, land behind it?
I'm pretty sure it's wooded, but like I said, I wasn't, I usually try and review the sites when I come out to a, a meeting. But given the circumstances, I was not able to do that this evening.
Mr. Chair, if the, if the second support pole is actually sitting kind of in the woods, I have, uh, no, no issue with that, but that would, i- if it's, if it's in front of someone's house, I would have, I would have a, a reason to, to hesitate and approve and voting to approve.
Okay. Uh, Mr. LeFrenier, you have anything else?
Well, I, I feel the way you do about poles and I was very upset with the double pole they put by the pharmacy right down on center of town and, uh, you know, I just, I want these questions answered before I will vote yes for this.
Yeah, so, um, we have a, well, we being me has a tendency to kind of go off on, on the, uh, the representative that comes before us. And we know, so John, I'm sorry, Ross, we understand that you're just the, the person presenting it. Like, we get that you don't make the decision, so, uh, you're in a tough spot. Um, but, you know, as our job, we, we need to look out for the town. So, um, you know, I, I think we'll probably, uh, Mr. Kamala, if you could give me some guidance here, rather than just flat out deny them, can we ask them to continue and come up with, with some information saying that, um, you know, um, that he's got some neighborhood approval from this, that the property owners are good with this, that it's a wooded area? Um, um, and, and, and. Or do, do we continue it or do we say no? Or do we take a vote and see where the card lies? I, I don't know, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, through the chair, um, may I ask the applicant to explain why when they were submitting the application, there was an urgency expressed behind this request?
Uh, the only urgency I could ever see is that, uh, I'm not sure what stage the house is at. If there was an emergency, maybe as of right now, it would be very difficult for emergency vehicles to pull in that driveway.
Yep, that's, that, that's what it says on the, uh, on the application.
Well, I think based on that, I would recommend the board continue the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so I'll request a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved. Second.
Okay, seconded. Um, so.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, if the board is inclined, the hearing may be left open, uh, so that we can receive additional information. Uh, simply continue the discussion.
Continue the hearing.
Okay, that sounds good, so we're not closing it?
Correct.
So there's no vote to be taken?
Correct.
So we're simply just exten, uh, leaving it open and continuing it?
Yes, we'll see him, uh, at the next, uh, select board meeting.
Okay, Ross, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
To the chair, uh, to the chair. Can we check with the, uh, the fire chief just to make sure that, um, that they're not causing an emergency by not moving this quickly enough?
Sure. Mr. Chief?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, you able to hear me?
Yeah. We can see it too.
Sure, um, so I think you see what's there. Uh, it, it would be very difficult for even an ambulance to get in the driveway right now, um. We weren't a part of the, uh, design process, so by the time we saw it, it was, um, I make my usual recommendations to make it safe, so we're just trying to catch it now. Um, we'll do our best to service them, there's other examples that are challenging to us also. So I'll just let you use your judgment here.
Thank you. Let it be known on the record that the fire chief has deferred to my judgment, first time in fifty years. Uh, all right, so we're good. So we're gonna, um, we're gonna continue this till, uh, till they get some more information from us and come up again. Thank you, Ross.
Very good, thank you.
Yep. Moving on, uh, to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda items are to approve the minutes of the three twelve twenty and three seventeen twenty select board meetings, accept the resignation of Mary Ann Chambers from the House, Hopkinton Historic District Commission, and accept the resignation of Claire Wright as the town's representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Would any members like to break out an item for a separate vote? I would like to break out the Claire Wright, uh, item.
Okay, to that, Mr. Chairman, then I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, accept the minutes from, uh, three twelve twenty and three seventeen twenty.
And the resignation from Mary Ann Chambers?
Well, that, that's just the, the second one, I think we should just, we'll keep that, that one open.
Okay. All right, so there's a, there's a motion, is it seconded?
Yes, I seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, I'm sorry, Mr. Coutinho, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Herr? Not, he's not available. Mr. Nasserula?
Yes.
Ms. LaFrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. Um, so I would like to just make a note, um, and just note, uh, Claire Wright's years of dedicating herself and her family's time to the town and to thank her very much for everything that she's done. Um, I had a chance to have a discussion with her a couple of weeks ago and it was a, it was a great conversation. It was nice to catch up with her again and, um, hopefully that maybe she changes her mind and gets, starts getting back on some boards. But, um, she's a, she's a great person and a great asset for the town. So, uh, thank you very much, Ms. Wright, and, um, that's all I have there.
And, and I, and I'd also, through the chair, I'd like to thank, uh, Mary Ann Chambers for all her hard work, um, on the, uh, Historical Society also.
Good. So, all right, Mr. Herr, Mr. Coutinho, if you'll make that motion?
Uh, I, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the acceptance of, uh, Mary Ann Chambers and Claire Wright's resignations to their, uh, designated, uh.
Commissions.
Commissions, thank you. I guess they're both commissions, yes.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Coutinho, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Nasserula?
Yes.
Ms. LaFrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. Mr. Herr, are you back on? Negative, okay. Next, A to Z Labs Laboratories, request for remotely-held community outreach meeting. The board has re, received a request from A to Z Labs asking for the board's approval to hold a remote participation community outreach meeting relative to the proposed location of marijuana testing lab at one hundred South Street, given the current public health state of emergency. Would the representative of A to Z Labs like to address the board on this issue?
Yes, good evening, my name is Bud Zalk, um, I am the presidency of A to Z Labs. Um, due to COVID-nineteen stay-at-home advisory, we are requesting, uh, to host a community outreach program, uh, meeting via, uh, virtual live meeting, uh, town hall meeting, um, that where the presenters can, uh, broadcast video of the meeting to a large audience. We can do up to, uh, the platform itself can handle up to ten thousand people. Um, and the meeting can be opened to attendees through a link itself, um, where the attendees can ask, uh, live, uh, questions, uh, live questions and, uh, receive answers. And, and the meeting itself can be recorded as well. Um, this is also in, in compliance with the, uh, CCC. This is also in, in compliance with the CCC Cannabis Control Commission where we would go through a process of advertising the meeting in multiple publications in the town of Hopkinton to ensure participation as part of the meeting itself. And one of the options that we can consider as well is receiving questions ahead of the meeting, which would be a unique way of communicating with the community and, and the residents in the area.
Can I just interrupt for a second, Bud? Josh, if you're listening, Brian needs permission to get let back into the meeting.
He, he's in at this point.
Yeah, I'm back.
Oh, hi.
Sorry, Bud, proceed.
No, no problem at all. So that, that's our request at this time to be able to host it, to host a virtual live meeting of the community outreach. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good. Any members of the board have any questions? Mr. Cutino?
I don't.
Mr. Herr? No. Nasrula?
I'm set.
Ms. LaFrenier?
The only thing I, they have a list of where they're going to advertise this online meeting, Metro West News, Hopkinton News, Hopkinton Independent and E-HOP. I would like them to add H-CAM to that because they are still doing their calendar.
Absolutely. I'm sorry. Did you say, can you say that again?
H-CAM, which is our, our community television station. And I would like that added to that list.
Absolutely. We're open to any suggestions and we'll advertise wherever we can to make sure complete participation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we have no other questions or comments from the board, correct? All right. Mr. Cutino, I would request a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to hold the community outreach meeting remotely.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrula?
Yes.
Ms. LaFrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone votes yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Bud.
Thank you.
Town pound, West Main Street, the board received a request from a citizen volunteer to do some restoration work on the Old Town Pound on West Main Street. The work includes stone wall work and installing a new informational sign. The property is under the jurisdiction of the select board. Is there a project representative, representative who would like to speak to the request?
Yes, I'm here, Brendan.
Okay.
Select board.
Okay, so for the record, it's, this is Jane Moran.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Jane.
So I've lived in town for a long, long time, the early nineteen seventies. And back then I can remember seeing the town pond, pound. And the stones were like chest high or so, and it was in pretty good shape back then. And then over the years, the stones have disappeared and fallen down and dilapidated. So I don't know what, maybe because I'm retired now and a little bit of time on my hands, but I reached out to a couple of friends and we thought, well, let's see what we can do to generate some interest in restoring it. And the history is really quite interesting. And actually kind of entertaining. And we provided a packet for you. But the term pound comes from back in the sixteen hundreds when the state was still under a lot of the English influence and a British influence. And that was their town measurement. And so back in the day, there were actually two town pounds on the town common. And the people were allowed, the citizens were always allowed to let their cattle and their horses and their sheep and their goats graze there. And then at night, if the owners hadn't picked them up, the volunteers would collect them and put them in these secure structures. And the structures were designed to be high enough so a horse couldn't jump out of it. Deep enough so the structure itself had to, the stones had to be dug down about three feet so that the pigs couldn't burrow under it. It had to be strong enough so that a bull couldn't break through it. And then in the morning, when the owners wanted to come and collect their animals, they had to pay a fee, whether it was a shilling or a pound, depending on how big or what the care was. So this happened back in the state mandated that each town have these town pounds. But it was up to the towns to determine the size and the structure. Anyway, over the years, there was this guy named Sam Valentine who was found guilty in the Cambridge Court of removing all of the stones for his own personal use. That was in April of whatever date it is. It was seventeen something or rather. The next month in May, when Hopkinton had its town meeting, they dedicated a powder house to be developed and built. And they named it after Stephen Valentine because they were really angry with him for removing the, the, the stones that belonged to the citizens of Hopkinton. And then we had a fire in our town hall and all the records were destroyed. So a lot of that history disappeared. But then in the nineteen oh one, it shows in the history that we researched that the structure was rebuilt at Zero Wood Street. At that point, there were various owners that were caretakers, but it shows that that's when the town actually did own the property. And as I said, over the years, it's been dilapidated. So I think it would be really an interesting project and a colorful piece of our Hopkinton history if we can rejuvenate that. So the two folks that I'm working with is Art Brooks, who is an old Boy Scout leader and responsible for some of the restoration during the nineteen sixties, I believe, or maybe it was the seventies, when some of the Boy Scouts tried to restore it. And then the, my other partner is Jeff Barnes, who, after we had several meetings, he actually recruited a town local landscaper who has experience in reconstructing stone walls and things like that, New View. And they have volunteered all of their services to do this for us. They think it's a wonderful idea. And obviously so do we. So what we're seeking from the Board of Selectmen at this point is number one, permission to go forward with the project. And number two is to front the cost of about twelve hundred dollars for signs or podiums that will tell the history. And we can post them in appropriate places around the town pond. So that people will be able to visit it and find out the history because it's really quite unique. Hopkinton actually has one of the only ones left that are, because over the years, many, many of them have disappeared, but this is kind of unique in that it is a round structure. A lot of the town ponds were square or rectangular or whatever. So it's very interesting and we would be very excited to be able to share this. Now, isn't, there is not a lot of parking space there, but it is within parking distance of the center trail so that people could park their cars and safely walk down the sidewalk and visit it. So that's our request. And before I wind it up, I'd just like to thank Jeff Barnes, who is also chairman of the Conservation Commission and works very hard for the town for all of his diligence and research and going out recruiting our local businesses. And also Art Brooks, who's been a life, not a lifelong resident, but a most many years resident and who has been very active in the Boy Scouts and very interested. And for years and years and years, he's actually volunteered and gone down and mowed the property to keep it so that it is somewhat visible. So that's our ask for tonight and we're just and I want to thank you for taking this on in these difficult times. And I think this is a feel good project. I don't know how you feel about it, but I think it might make everybody kind of feel good in all of this tough times that we're going through right now.
Thank you, Jane. Any of the members of the boards have any questions or comments? Mr. Cutino?
Yeah, I think it's great. I remember several years ago, there was a, like a plywood cutout of a cow in there. We can get, get a couple of cows from the hilltop.
Sure, that was put up there by a proctor. One of the proctors built that. Because a lot of people said, what's this town pond and what are they used for? So he volunteered, I believe it was Garner Brothers who volunteered the wood and the, and then he actually painted it and put it there because that kind of answered the question. Well, that that's what it's there for. It was to enclose the, the loose animals. But of course, we didn't have any cows at that point, maybe Bessie or whatever, but from, but anyway, yeah, so but then it, it just withered away over the years. It just kind of deteriorated. But there's certainly, you know, I'm sure that we could do something to recreate maybe some animals or something. That might be a good project to get cultural arts involved with or something else. Like, we can foresee all kinds of different avenues where the town, various town committees could get involved in.
Mr. Herr?
I think it's a great idea. We would want to make sure that all the town committees that do need to weigh in on it do get involved. I'm sure Jeff will cover conservation, but we want to make sure the historical commission, it's not inside the district itself, I don't think, but the historical commission gets an opportunity to weigh in on it, planning board and, and others. But I think it's a great idea and I think it'd be very interesting to see and I'd be looking forward to touring it someday.
Just a brief answer to one of your questions. We didn't go before conservation because we didn't see any wetlands, but we did go before the historical commission. And they actually were not sure. They did not think that they had jurisdiction over their property. And they were the, actually the ones who suggested that we go before the select board to determine that. And that's how we ended up here with you tonight.
Okay, great.
Mr. Nasrula?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I've actually never seen it in its full glory. So I think it's fabulous. I think Jane, you're the epitome of like community service. Find something that needs to get done and you, and you, you take the initiative and get it done. So I'm all for it. I think it's a fantastic idea. I have a lot of stone to donate if you need it.
We'll take it.
So feel free. All sizes is a huge wall of when we replaced our septic system.
No, I'm sure that we'll put you in contact with New View. Thank you.
All right. Mr. LaFrenier?
Yeah, I'm very excited about this. Anything we can do to keep our history and to bring back things from the seventeen hundreds and the ideas and, and keep alive our, our history and where we're very, this is very unique now to any other towns or, or they're almost all gone. I, I think we really do need to make the effort to keep it and, and to put out these information for people so that they can read about it and, and keep our history alive. That way I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Yep, same here. Just, you were talking about signage. So I would just make sure you go through the ZBA to make sure the signage is appropriate size to the, to the parcel of land. So so hearing that, that we're done talking about that, Mr. Cutino, I will request a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed work at the Old Town Pound as described in the material submitted.
Okay, Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Second, yes.
Attaboy. Mr. Nasrula?
Yes.
Mary Jo?
Oh, yes.
Tedstone, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jane, great work, excellent project. Couple of questions. Now that you've received the select, what's okay to proceed? What's your timeline for doing this? And with regard to the one thousand two hundred and fifty, have you identified which town department will be paying for this?
You will.
I believe the select board was, the request went, is going to the select board. Secondly, if we can get on this quickly, I think that New View would like to have this done by June before they really enter into their busy season. But I, I really have to check with Jeff on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. FY twenty twenty one budget updates. Mr. Kamalo, can you give us an update on the budgets, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to cover both the FY twenty budget as well as the FY twenty one budget. And I think it is timely that tonight I provide the select board and the community with this update. While we have been focused on the human impacts of COVID nineteen situation and on the important public health and safety dimensions of this challenge, we've also have an enterprise to run and traditional public services to support as fully as we can. From that perspective, it is important that I provide the following update on the town's financial situation. With respect to the fiscal twenty twenty budget year, that is now seventy five percent complete, a couple of points need to be made. First, let me assure you that the town has adequate cash on hand to meet immediate needs with over fifty five million dollars on deposit at this time. This is information that has been provided to me by the finance department. Our biggest revenue source is property tax. And we have already collected most of the amount due in fiscal year twenty twenty, approximately seventy five percent. We're budgeting an additional fifteen million dollars between May first and June first. And we expect that most of those payments will come in on time as nearly half of the inbound payments are made by mortgage companies who have already collected and are holding the taxes due. Our next largest revenue stream is aid from the Commonwealth, which is about eight point two million dollars this year payable to us in monthly installments. We received the first ten payments on time and we have had no indication that there will be delays on the final two payments. On the expense side, while there has been a lot of exceptional effort by our town team, most of it has been performed by permanent staff who are already budgeted for. We are tracking our incremental costs and will be developing requests for reinvestment of all allowable costs through FEMA under state guidelines. I'm also delighted to share with the community that town staff has secured and is applying for additional grants. The town received twelve thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars from the state's emergency relief fund to date with more expected. To support the senior citizens of Hopkinton, the town has also secured a ten thousand dollar grant to implement a meal delivery program during the COVID nineteen crisis.
Did you say meal, a meal delivery program?
Correct.
That's excellent. Well done there. That's awesome.
Yeah. And finally, town staff have reviewed the CARES Act stimulus package and have identified nineteen grant opportunities the town will continue to investigate. To further control spending, that's an ordinary situation. I have issued a standard operating procedure calling for an additional mission critical review of all non payroll spending in excess of two thousand dollars, both operating spending and capital spending. We will use this procedure to prioritize spending with an eye towards preserving available cash and to defer expenses where possible until after the COVID nineteen situation is stabilized. I'm also directing all town departments to monitor staffing needs carefully, including limiting deployment of overtime personnel only when it is absolutely necessary for public safety and or public health needs and continuously monitoring and evaluating productivity and continuing operations when working remotely. In, in summary, our fiscal year twenty twenty financial situation is stable and under control with the implementation of conservative measures intended to enhance our fiscal resilience in the months to come. The situation for fiscal twenty ten to one is more uncertain. As of March thirteenth, we believed we had developed a workable budget for the coming fiscal year. It now seems that the budget we developed will need to be revisited on several fronts. One, our latest budget plan included an estimated nine point five percent increase in state aid. And that increase was based on the governor's budget as it stood just a few weeks ago. At eight point nine million dollars, aid from the state was expected to find nine point three percent of our fiscal year twenty twenty one operating budget. Our second largest revenue source after property tax revenue. Considering the constitutional requirement in Massachusetts for balanced state budgets and considering that the virtual shutdown of the state is very likely to cut deeply into state revenue, it is reasonable to think that our eventual fiscal year twenty twenty one state aid number would be well below the eight point nine million dollars in our current plan. Would be well below the eight point nine million dollars in our current plan. We must identify and address this gap. Employee health insurance is one of our largest expenses with a fiscal year twenty twenty budget level of seven point six million dollars. Our March thirteenth budget for the coming year forecasted a nine percent increase in that expense. Depending on how the COVID nineteen crisis unfolds, our insurer could be looking for a much larger increase to cover our workforce. I'm working closely with our insurer on this issue and will keep the board posted. Finally, the plan we developed in March, while within the constraints of proposition two and a half, hit a four point two four. Four point two four percent rise in tax impact. With over a third of that tax impact tied to new interest and principal payments on debt to be excluded from proposition two and a half limits. Namely, the principal and interest payable on nine point five million in new classroom construction and three million for a school roof project. In the coming weeks and months, the select board may want to consider whether this tax impact. And I underscore that, whether this tax impact is still appropriate in the current circumstances. In summary, thanks to sound financial stewardship, we have the resources to respond to this crisis today. And through the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty. For fiscal year twenty twenty one. We are closely tracking the state aid issue. And we are revisiting our operating costs, our plans for borrowing and our capital improvement proposals with an eye towards tax impact. To complete this work, we are reactivating the budget coordination committee and are re-engaging at the senior staff. At, at the senior staff level across departments to support this effort. I will provide the board with regular updates as our work progresses.
Excellent. Thank you for that, Mr. Camalo. Board members, uh, have any questions or comments?
Wait and see.
Yep.
Chair.
Sir.
So a couple of thoughts specific to this fiscal year, the one we are currently in. And how it could play into next fiscal year, uh, based on a possible recession. Uh, first, uh, I lived, uh, through two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Serving on the Board of Selectmen at times when the economy crashed around the financial markets, because of the financial markets. And we had zero percent increase years, we had point nine percent increase year. You know, overrides came, I mean, underlies came from all that, et cetera, et cetera. So been there, done that with the board and with budgets. It's really important this year. As we've all obviously dialed back our activities in many ways, some of us have had to dial up their activities, I get it. But a lot of, lot of town services have had to dial back for obvious reasons. Whatever we can save this year will help us balance the budget next year. Because it can come to us as free cash coming out of this year going into next year. So that's why limiting overtime to absolute necessity. Limiting expenses to absolute necessity to spending the town's money as if it's our own. So that we have additional funds coming out of this year that we don't spend in this current fiscal year. That we can apply to next year or perhaps the year after, based on when the DOR certifies it. That's really important in this situation. If we're going to go into a fifteen or twenty percent unemployment. Status across the state and across the country, that's called, that's called a depression, whether, you know, some people want to call it a recession, whatever. It's going to be a steep economic situation for us to climb out of. If everything goes the way it certainly looks like it's going right now. Hopefully it doesn't, and I'm not trying to create recession here, no one cares what I think. You know, out in the markets, but we've got to be really, really conservative with what cash we have today. So we have anything we can for next year. So it's really important that this overtime be managed by our department heads. That expenses be managed by our department heads in this fiscal year. So that we can turn it into free cash to keep everybody going into next year. Specific to next year, you know, we're going to have to figure this out, but the, the better job we do right now. Will make it less painful for us if we have to change anything in the budget that we've already crafted going into next year. So I implore all our department heads to make it work this year as best we can. And I know we've got great people out there doing that, but please think about next year, conserve as much cash as possible. We may need it for next year to keep the numbers of employees, to keep everything going the way we want to do it. It's really, really important. Having lived through this once before, when the markets crashed. It was very difficult and we actually put hiring freezes in place and took out headcount, et cetera, when people resigned. I don't want to have to go there. That's why it's important that department heads do it this year for the next, what, three, four months? Three months anyway, to get us to next year.
Well said, Mr. Herr, thank you very much. Um, let's see. Mr. Nasrullah, anything?
No, um, I echo what, what Brian said. I think, uh. He's, he's spot on. I think it's, it's vitally important that we, uh, conserve what we can now because we don't know what the future holds.
You're right. And, and so it, I, I will totally and completely agree with Mr. Herr. Um, you know, I know that he's been on the board forever and he's been through ups and downs with the town. But nobody knows how this is going to end. Uh, this might, we might come out of this stronger and greater and not a problem and. And, um, and, and it'll show our, our wonderful resolve in our town, our state and our country. Or we may not, uh, nobody knows, but you know, now's the time to start saving for rainy day and the, and the, how you put it, Mr. Herr, saying that. Uh, spend this money like it's our own, that absolutely resonates with me. Um. And I do think that, um, I, I do think that our departments, our department heads are probably doing that already, but. I agree with you and it, it's just uncharted territory for absolutely everybody. There's nobody that grew up in the United States of America that's been through something like this before, so. Um, but yeah, very well said. So, Mr. LaFrenier, did you have anything? I didn't mean to leapfrog you.
No, I, I was just wondering if we could just, uh, do a reminder or a reminder like a memo or, or a little note or, or something to all the department heads. Reminding them to, to look at their budgets and to do this.
Yeah, I know that Mr. Herr and I and Mr. Camalo were, uh, were having this discussion a couple of weeks ago, so. Uh, I'm sure that the department heads, if they weren't, um, you know. Um, aware of this already, I'm sure that Mr. Camalo's heads up probably reminded them to. To be ready, so.
Right now, people have their heads down and, and trying to stay home and trying to stay healthy. But, uh, once we come out of this, it's, it's up to us to be, uh, fiscally responsible and fiscally healthy.
Yep, and during this, during this as well. Uh, Mr. Camalo, the twenty twenty annual town meeting update, please.
Yeah, through the chair, by, by way of introduction, um, previously. The board took action, uh, postponing the annual town meeting to the end of June. And as part of that vote, the board also, uh, requested town manager and town council. To file a special legislation that would have also postponed the town election. And before we actually go to that point, the state legislature responding to the COVID issue. Passed a new law which allows towns to postpone their elections until the end of June. And with your permission, at this point, I would like to invite Mr. Deegan.
If I can, Mr. Camalo, sorry to interrupt you, since I'm the only member of the, the Board of Selectmen, a select board. Um, that is, uh, up for reelection at this time, I, I'd like to recuse myself at this time.
Yeah, I think that's the right thing to do, John. Thank you. I'll, uh, I'll shoot you a text when we're done talking about this and you can come back in.
Right, thanks so much.
So, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I would like to invite, uh, the town clerk, Mr. Connor Deegan, to also give an introduction to this request.
Thank you, Mr. Camalo. Mr. Deegan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone's, uh, keeping their social distance. So, uh, as it stated in the agenda, I spoke with Mr. Camalo. And so far, what we're looking at is that the ideal timeframe would be to put the special town or the, um, annual town election. On the Monday following the start of the annual town meeting, which would be June twenty ninth. And that would keep it within the fiscal year, uh, as the current rules state. But give us enough time to see how some of this rides out, but also prepare and allow for. Early and absentee voting so that we can have fewer people that are actually going to the polls.
Um, Mr. Camalo?
So at this point, we, um, requesting the board to postpone the annual town election and set it for June twenty ninth, twenty twenty.
Okay, so, why, before we make a motion, why don't I go to the board, to the board members at this time and see if anyone has any comments? Uh, Mr. Cutino is not there, so Mr. Herr.
Mr. Camalo, so I think you said in your presentation that. Before we filed the special legislation with the state. To extend the town election into the new fiscal year. Uh, the governor and the legislature passed this new law allowing it to go to the end of June. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we've not taken any action specific to the previous vote of the board to extend it into the fall sometime?
It, yes, we, we, we had not taken any action.
We could still take that action outside this law and ask for special legislation. Is that correct?
I, I spoke with, uh, with town council on this issue. Uh, it was his opinion that based on, uh. Uh, his conversations with, um, um, with, with, with state officials. Um, that was not, that, that may not be possible. Specifically under the law that was passed by, by the governor, um, this would not be possible.
It's probably likely that if we, I mean, we can always file for special legislation for whatever we want. But to your point, given that they've already gone at, gone out. Themselves at the state level in, in recent sort of the timeline for state elections. And I know the Secretary of State was behind that bill as well. Um, the likelihood of a special. Piece of legislation that we request outside even that new law, uh, passing would probably be a bit of an uphill climb. Um, so I'm just thinking, if we've not done anything to date, and here we are, April seventh, so we're mid-April. And, uh, the state has passed something new. Um, and the likelihood of us getting our own special through the legislature would probably be an uphill battle. It seems to me that this could be our best path forward. I personally think the more we, time we can build into any situation, uh, right now, the better off we all are as a community. Because we don't know when this is going to end. We don't know when, quote, normal returns, um, and even when sort of. Anytime we can build in, I think is perfect, but I understand what you're saying with respect to, um. The likelihood of passing a special piece of legislation. Is Mr. Mary's here? I see his name on the screen. I'm not sure if he's out there.
Yeah, I'm here.
If he comes in fine, but that's my sense, Mr. Chair. So Ray, you're there. Uh, what are your thoughts on all this, please?
Well, well, uh, my thought basically is that, um. To get special legislation, we have to, um, go through the governor's office to request it. Uh, because we don't obviously have a town meeting vote, um, asking for it. So, uh, if we're going to go through the governor's office, um, there's an additional hurdle, which is you have to persuade the governor that, uh, that he should file it on our behalf. Um, uh, at this point, the clear, um, preference. Uh, needs to be to utilize the authority we have. Um, to extend it to a date sometime in June. After that, if it becomes obvious that, uh, an election. Uh, in June is for some reason no longer feasible. Um, we will, um, always have the option of, of pursuing some other remedy. But if it's not going to be feasible for us, it's also not going to be feasible for many other towns. And, uh, my guess is that the legislature will provide us with a further remedy. Uh, that said, we'll continue to monitor this, uh, situation closely and if we, um. If it looks as though we need to pursue, uh, a special remedy for Hopkinton, we'll certainly be on top of it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, from my perspective, it seems that, uh, perhaps this June twenty ninth date, as Connor's suggesting. Uh, is probably the best bet forward at this time. Uh, to Mr. Deegan's point, maybe someday down the road we'll have to revisit again, but hopefully not. Uh, but that's my sense just given this discussion this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may too. Also, the town clerk has also, has diligently consulted with the, with the, uh, local party chairs. And they have suggested caucus dates that do line up neatly with the June twenty ninth election date.
Okay. Great. Board members, are we all set with this?
All set on my end.
Great. So I will request a motion to postpone the date of the annual town election currently scheduled for May eighteenth, twenty twenty. And after consultation with the town manager and town clerk to reschedule that election to June twenty ninth, twenty twenty. Uh, we will do a roll call vote. So, is there any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. Mr. Herr, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Mr. LaFrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Ted Stone, yes. I request a motion to postpone the date of the Democratic Party Caucus for the annual town election currently scheduled on. Uh, what is the date that it's current, currently scheduled, Mr. Camalo?
I'll, I'll defer to the town clerk.
Uh, through the chair, it is currently scheduled for, uh, this Friday, April tenth.
Okay, and what, what's the date that we're rescheduling it to?
We're rescheduling the Democratic Caucus on consultation with the chair to Thursday, May fourteenth, six thirty PM to eight thirty PM.
And, um, do you have the Republican dates as well?
Yes, the, um, the Republicans had theirs originally scheduled for this Thursday, April ninth. And upon consultation with their chair, we have, uh, discussed the possibility of doing. Friday, May fifteenth, from five PM to seven PM. And that puts us squarely in the same timeframe that we would otherwise have. For preparing to get candidates onto the ballot so that we can hopefully get absentee early ballots printed early enough to get those out to people.
Okay, so, um. Let me reread this motion. I request a motion to postpone the date of the Democratic Party Caucus for the annual town election currently scheduled for April tenth. And after consultation with the town manager and town clerk to reschedule that caucus to the date of. Uh, May fourteenth, from eighteen thirty to twenty thirty hours. Um, any discussion with the board?
So long.
Any second?
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Nasrullah. Um, Mr. Herr, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Mr. LaFrenier?
Yes.
Ted Stone, yes. And finally, I request a motion to postpone the date of the Republican Party Caucus for the annual town election currently scheduled on. April ninth and after consultation with town manager and town clerk to reschedule that caucus to, uh, May fifteenth, from seventeen hundred to nineteen hundred hours. Uh, Mr., wait, I will.
So long.
So, so, back in. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Herr, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nasrullah?
Yes.
LaFrenier?
Yes.
Ted Stone votes yes. Okay. Uh, thank you, everyone. Mr. Camalo, why don't you hit us with the town manager's report? I'm going to step out for just a moment to handle a work item and, uh, I'll be back in just a moment, okay?
Okay, uh, I'll start off with the main street project. Uh, as you may recall, on February twenty fifth, the select board established a budget for just compensation at one point six million dollars. And also approved the template of the offer letters, um, with the option for donation. Uh, at that meeting, the select board also authorized the town manager to send the offer letters to the affected property owners. To date. All property owners have been contacted by mail, including the. all property owners have been contacted by mail, including the offer and just compensation letters. And following the guidance from the Select Board, Dave Daltorio, assisted by Michelle Medoc, also reached out to the property owners just to make sure that we answer any questions that they may have. They were able to reach all property owners except for one. It also has been at least 30 days from the date of the written offers, and therefore tonight, I'm respectfully requesting that the board vote to, number one, dedicate to the Main Street Corridor project those town-owned parcels that are under the care, custody, management, and control of the Select Board. Two, accept the dedication of the Main Street Corridor project or those town-owned parcels that are under the care, custody, management, and control of the Cemetery Commission and the Park and Rec Commission. And finally, adopt and execute the order of taking substantially as drafted for the permanent and temporary easements needed for the Main Street Corridor project, and authorize the town manager and town council to take any action necessary to effectuate these takings. In terms of process, following this vote, town council will file the order of taking and plans with the Register of Dates by April 14th. At the end of April, the town will complete a write-off way filing, including final easement documents and deductions for owners to pick up their just compensation payments from town hall. Other key highlights for the project include the following. Recent NPO meetings have confirmed the project is on the FY '22. The 100% Designs, VHB, the Town, and Mastioti continue to review comments, including project cost estimates. The Federal Highway Administration has given its final sign-off on the project with no additional comments. Recent other contacts in relation to project design include properties at number 60, 67, 78, 108, 110, and 111 Main Street. The submission of plans, specifications, and estimates to Mastioti is estimated mid-May. This means that the project is still on schedule to go out to bid mid-June. I also invited town council to participate in this conversation in case the board has any questions regarding the easements.
Thank you. Board, do you have, board members, do you have anything? Mr. Cabalo, I have a list of two, two motions and an order of taking. Is that something, is that something I'm going to have to read?
Please.
Oh, great.
I'll read it for you, Mr. Chair.
That's all right, that's all right, I'm on a roll, I'm at work, so I'm getting paid for it. All right, motion dedication of town easements, number one. I move that the board vote to dedicate for the Main Street Corridor project portions of town-owned land under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board shown as TE 57, PUE 39, TE 8, E 27, TE 42, TE 43, PUE 37, and TE 65 on a plan titled Showing Location of Easements for the Main Street Corridor Project for the Purpose of Reconstructing Main Street Route 135, dated April 1, 2020, prepared by VHB Incorporated to be used for the purposes described in the document entitled Dedication of Municipal Parcels, and to adopt and to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to execute said dedication of municipal parcels on behalf of the board. Do we, do we, we move on each of these individually, correct, Mr. Cabalo?
Yes, correct.
So we're so moved, are we seconded?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Mariis, it's my understanding that Mr. Tedstone was seeking a motion that he received from somebody on the board here, I didn't pick up who, who said so moved, and that, that motion he was seeking, is that in line with your expectations for the motion?
Yes, our office prepared the motion.
Thank you. And who made the motion, please, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Nasrullah, did you, did you move it?
Yes.
Yes, that was me.
Okay.
I just want to be very clear that we have a moved motion in a second, I'm not sure who moved the motion.
We're fine.
Mr. Nasrullah moved the motion, but it looks like you were having a hard time.
I think my, yeah.
His connection.
Yeah, his connection's not too good.
Okay.
We're getting a nice tour of his house.
I know, he keeps walking around.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Nasrullah.
Trying to get the better wifi.
Mr. Nasrullah moved the motion, Mr. Chair, and Ms. LaFreniere seconded it, is that correct? And it's in line with town council's expectations. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone says yes. All right, motion dedication of town easements, number two. I move that the board vote to accept the dedication of the Main Street Corridor project portions of the town-owned land under the care, custody, and control of the Cemetery Commission and Parks and Rec Commission shown as TE 92, TE 93, TE 70, and TE 73, on a plan titled Showing Location of Easements for the Main Street Corridor Project for the Purpose of Reconstructing Main Street Route 135, dated April 1, 2020, prepared by VHB Incorporated to be used for the purposes described in the documents entitled Dedication of Municipal Parcels, which were executed by the Cemetery Commission and Parks and Rec Commission respectively.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cutino, seconded by Ms. LaFreniere.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Herr?
One more time, you were seeking a motion, that motion you read out. Mr. Mariis, is that motion in line with your expectations?
Yes, indeed it is.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. Motion order of taking. I move that the board vote to adopt and execute the, the proposed order of taking substantially as drafted for all permanent and temporary easements required by the Main Street Corridor project as described on plan titled Showing Locations of Easements for the Main Street Corridor Project for the Purpose of Reconstructing Main Street Route 135, dated April 1, 2020, prepared by VHB Incorporated to be used for the purposes described in the proposed order of taking and to authorize the town manager and town council to take any necessary and, to effectuate these takings.
Moved.
Mr. Cutino moved the motion.
Seconded.
And Ms. LaFreniere seconded it. Any further discussion? Mr. Herr, would you like to add anything?
Mr. Chair, you were seeking a motion that Mr. Cutino made and Ms. LaFreniere seconded with respect to the order of taking. Mr. Mariis, is that motion as made by Mr. Cutino and seconded by Ms. LaFreniere in line with your expectations?
It is. Let me just comment one, on one aspect of it, and that has to do with the words substantially as drafted. What you have in your board packet is a, is an order of taking that is indeed fully drafted. However, between now and the time we get it on, on record, it is our understanding that at least one and perhaps two of the parcels will change hands. That means that the, that the listed owner and the reference, referenced book and page number may change, and that's the reason why the motion references substantially as drafted, because we may have to make those smaller kinds of adjustments between now and the time that the order actually gets recorded.
Thank you. Are you satisfied, Mr. Herr?
So I am, I am in order.
Yes.
Today.
Yep. Yep.
Want to make sure too.
All right, so we have a, a motion that's seconded. No further discussion from the board. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Tedstone, yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Cabalo, I believe that brings us to the COVID-19 related administrative matters.
Yes, through the chair, I have, I believe, a couple of updates for the board. One through myself, and I think the second one, I'm going to ask member John Cutino to help along. The first one, as we all know, and as we've been discussing during this meeting and also with our neighbors, COVID-19 has imposed economic hardships on many residents in town and with the Commonwealth. And as part of mitigating these negative impacts economically, the state leadership has passed a law which allows the town to address the deadlines for the payment of taxes. And one such law allows the town to take specific actions relative to extending the due date for personal property and real estate, real estate taxes from May 1, 2020 to no later than June 1, 2020. Extend the due dates for the real estate tax exemptions from April 1, 2020 to no later than June 1, 2020. And last but not least, waive late fees for a court interest in the event of a late payment with a due date on or after March 10, 2020, so long as the payment is meant by June 30th, 2020. This includes payments for any real estate, personal property tax, or excise tax, inclusive of any betterment assessments or overdue water sewer bills added as an additional charge to the taxpayer.
Nice. So should I, should I do that first motion now?
Please.
I've got them right here, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the due dates of the fourth quarter real estate and personal property taxes from May 1st, 2020 to June 1st, 2020.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Cutino, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. Mr. Cutino, motion number two, please.
To move to extend the application deadline for tax exempted exemptions from April 1st, 2020 to June 1st, 2020.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Nasrullah?
Yes.
LaFreniere?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, yes. Motion number three, Mr. Cutino.
Chairman, I'd like to move to waive the interest in, or other penalties on any late payment for real estate, personal property, or excise tax, as well as the betterment assessments or reportment thereof, and any water rate or annual sewer use added to any tax payment with a due date on or after March, March 10th, 2020, so long as payment is made by June 30th, 2020.
Seconded.
Hey, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. Mr. Cutino, how do you vote?
You know, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. LaFreniere?
Yes.
Tedstone, yes. That's good. So thank you, Mr. Cabalo, and thank you, Mr. Cutino, for reading those liaison reports. Any members, liaison reports?
Mr. Chair, just one more update on related to COVID. With your permission, may I ask Mr. Cutino to address a couple issues pertaining to the marathon?
May.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, there, there are two. This morning, there was a meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, and they would like to put up the, the usual banner that we have welcoming runners coming across Main Street. They'd like to put up another one reminding people of the, the change of date in the, to September 14th, that, you know, just, just to give some normalcy, because we usually have a banner up there anyway, and just to look a little welcoming in these tough times that we have right now. And, and the second one is to discourage people starting on Monday, May 20th by continuing to do the, the normal road closings and, and parking bans downtown so as not to, not to encourage and to discourage people starting, starting their race here in Hopkinton and running through the eight, eight other towns to, that may lead to people getting hurt.
So I hear your motion, and, and tell me if I'm, if I'm hearing it incorrectly, it's, sounds like you're, it sound like you said that you'd like to, to continue with the road closures. I'm not okay with, with the road closures, I'm good with the parking bans, but I'm not okay with the road closures on Monday. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, actually, there were actually two there. One was, one was to allow the Chamber of Commerce to put up the, put up the banner. That, that was, that was one of them. And the second one was, and, and this is, this is why it was, I would want to bring it up, so we could discuss it of, of the best way to.
I know what you're saying, Mr. Cutino. I know you, you want to, you want to discourage social gathering in town and kind of running their own race defiantly against the, the BAA's decision to postpone until September 14th.
BAA and, and both the BAA and the governor, when, when I was at the, the meeting with the governor, and he just said, we're going to try and do our best to discourage running. How are you in Hopkinton, you're going to be able to, to, to support me? And I looked her, looked her in the eye and said, of course, we'll support you. So that, that's where we are, that's where we're at, because we are the start, and we have to, we have to start, start.
I agree, and I'm good with that, but I'm not good with, so, so generally, we close the roads at, I think, 8 o'clock, and then reopen them at, at noon or something like that. I'm not okay with that, to, to stop that. I'm okay with putting parking bands up and, and temporary signs saying that two-hour parking and, and have our officers enforce that, or have some towing done or, or whatnot. But I think it's, where we're not having the marathon, I, I could not support having Route 135, Route 85, Wood Street, East Main Street, and West Main Street closed to traffic from 8 o'clock on. But I'm absolutely pro banning the parking and the getting together.
Well, Joe, just because I, I didn't, I, I didn't know how to actually go about the, doing the, the governor's wishes. That's why I discussed it with, with Mr. Cabalo, and we just, we didn't know whether we should just do the normal procedures to, that might be a way of passive aggressively, you know, until we didn't have to have a, a large police presence at the, at the, at the start line to discourage it, that, that we just, if we closed a, a couple roads to traffic that people wouldn't even drive up there to try and park. But I'm, I'm up to whatever we can do to, to do that, do the best we can.
Mr. Cabalo, would you like to weigh in on this, please?
Yeah, through the chair, a couple of thoughts. One, the board may authorize the town manager to reach out to the Public Safety Department so that they can come up with a plan that will help the town prevent people from running their own races on, on Patriot's Day. The, the, the other thought could be to really limit the parking ban as well as perhaps the, the road closures to the common area. I know traditionally, the road closures extend beyond Main Street, I think that's not the idea. The idea is to just make the start line not accessible for anybody who wants to run on that day.
I back that 100%.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Chair, so similar to round a few times, stepping on that start line is, is like, that's a religious experience for a lot of people, right? So if we take that start line completely out of the mix by cordoning off the doughboy statue parcel, the start line down to, you know, the corner dash just right behind the doughboy, and up to the common, the other corner of the common, so that people cannot step on that line, so that, there's a couple officers there that make sure they say to everybody, go home, this isn't happening today, and you can't park your car anywhere in downtown Hopkinton unless you're a resident of Hopkinton. I think that would solve it and address Mr. Cutino's discussion with the governor as well. Runners are going to want to step on that line. If they don't step on that line in their head, they didn't do it, right? So that's the key to this whole thing.
What if there is no line? What if we could talk to Mr. Westerling and, and have that line be painted over? So it's strictly black?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should do that. I think we should the area and make it very clear that runners are not allowed in Hopkinton, and are not allowed on East Main Street, just shut them down. I need some, I think we're going to need some police officers out there to make this happen.
I just always try to go a different route rather than like building a wall, which just sounds like what you're trying to do, Mr. Herr, so.
I, I'm not a big fan of walls, and we won't get into that here. But I do think orange cones all around that area I described with a couple of officers out there is going to be important that day, because there are people that are going to come and try to run this thing on their own.
Okay, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I agree with you. Okay, so what do you need from us, Mr. Cabalo? Do we need to? I agree with you. Okay, so what do you need from us, Mr. Kamalo? Do we need to be more succinct and describe it exactly what we want, or?
Yeah, I think, I think a motion, you know, authorizing the town manager to engage in public safety to provide a plan that will prohibit people from accessing the start line on Marathon Day.
With feedback from the emergency management team, the DPW, and maybe the Select Board as well?
Correct.
Okay. So it's moved. Mr. Coutino, did you move that?
I did just move it.
Okay, is it seconded?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Coutino, seconded by Ms. Lefrenier. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Coutino, how do you vote?
Coutino, yes.
On both articles, right? On both the banner?
We only made one motion. We only made one motion, but if, if you would, if we could make a separate motion just to, to approve.
All right, so let's just, let's just vote on this one motion. So Mr. Coutino, you said yes? Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Tedstone, yes. Mr. Coutino, why don't you put your second motion forth regarding the banner?
The motion to allow the Chamber of Commerce to put the, put a, the, the usual banner across Main Street, but this time not saying welcoming runners to what's something that's more appropriate to this crisis that we're in right now and the, and the postponement.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is it seconded?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Lefrenier. Mr. Coutino, how do you vote?
Coutino, yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Nasrullah?
Yes.
Lefrenier?
Yes.
Tedstone, yes. Okay, that's great. Future board agenda items. Any members have any future board agenda items?
Mr. Chair, go back to the first motion specific to the public safety. Can we be sure that the plan that public safety officials put together is circulated to the board members so we know in advance and we can help circulate amongst the community and our contacts, you know, what's gonna be happening on Marathon Day? And I guess I would just reemphasize again, without it being in the motion, we need police officers on, on scene that day.
Okay. And I, I do believe that in the motion, it, it said the emergency management team, DPW, and the Select Board, so we'll be involved in that.
Okay.
Any future board agenda items? There can't be any.
Is Connor still there?
No.
I had, I had a question for him because I, I had this idea. I mean, I know we have to have the town budget passed and okay by July 1. And I wanted to find out what other towns were doing about their possible town meetings. And I had a thought, maybe we could just do something. I don't know whether we're doing a, how we're gonna do it, but I wanted some input from him on what if we just did the money articles for town meeting and put everything off to a fall town meeting, you know, zoning and, and planning and, and everything else, and just, just did the operating budget before July 1 so that we can use the money.
So I, I think that it might be, Mr. Kamalo, tell me if I'm wrong, but would it be a little premature to start doing that? Because if, if May 4th, this state of emergency is lifted and we go back to business as usual, I think we can probably get everything done by June 22, but right now, everything's so, everything's in flux so much that we just don't know what's gonna happen. So probably something we can revisit?
Yeah, I think though, yeah, through the chair, administratively, the Select Board did open the warrant. Articles were submitted, the warrant closed. I don't believe the Select Board has any authority to disqualify any article that was properly submitted.
Okay. So it'll be all or nothing, but there's a chance that if this thing continues on into June, then there's a chance that we may have to kick this back into July 1st, past July 1st. State of emergency overrides policy every day of the week.
Yeah, in fact, the, the, the state is monitoring this issue very closely.
I'm sure they are.
That's right.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
I don't know. Urfaan, Urfaan just went in the dark for a second. Yeah, I think.
He's out at the fire pit.
I have to start the grill.
Start the grill.
I, I believe I saw, I believe I saw him throwing some litter on his neighbor's yard dress then. That's awesome.
We are totally getting a tour of Urfaan's house.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well.
It's like Zillow.
You know, my wife is a Realtor.
All right, so Mr. Coutino, the most important motion of the night.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, lots of seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Coutino, how do you vote?
Yeah, you know.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Nasrullah?
Yes.
Ms. Lefrenier?
Yes.
Mr. Tedstone, Olbstein.
Sir Kamalo still had something to say.
All right, Mr. Kamalo.
I just wanted to, through the chair, thank Elaine for a wonderful job getting us ready for this meeting.
Yes, Elaine and Josh as well. So thanks to everybody involved and.
The patience of, Josh has the patience of a saint. I saw him working this afternoon with one of our members and he.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
People in the world. God bless them. And everybody be well. Thank you. God bless, and let's get through this together. Stay safe, everyone.
Tedstone out. That's it, shut it down.